Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's work session for the Portsmouth Planning Board for May 12th. There's one item on the agenda, and that is the zoning ordinance and zoning map amendments. I'd like to just say that we won't be taking any public input tonight, but after this work session, or as soon as the work session concludes at some point, we will be having a public hearing. That'll be at a date to be determined. So if anybody's watching, we will be having a public hearing on these items where public comment will be welcome. So with that, I'm going to turn over this to Rick Tainter to start the meeting off.
Okay, thank you. And I have a brief presentation, so we can just turn your eyes to the screen and try to just go through this fairly quickly. I first wanted to just talk about how we got here, and kind of the process, to recap the steps we've taken. And as you know well, from many, many meetings, we did a lot of work on the zoning ordinance revision, and it was finally adopted by the, or enacted by the city council in December of 2009. And there were some concerns, although we spent a lot of time in parking, there were very quickly some concerns about the parking requirements. And so the planning board started doing a review and ultimately presenting recommendations to the city council. There was an interim reduction in the in lieu payment pending further action and study. And then we, the planning board created the downtown parking focus group specifically to get input and perspective from the business and development community. It was felt that that was one piece that was not adequately included. And that focus group was, worked for, I believe, three to four months and produced a draft report in June and a final report in July of 2010. And then the recommendations from the focus group kind of percolated along, and the Economic Development Committee looked at this, commission looked at this in November and December, and was generally supportive of it, although they had a few concerns, some of it relating to residential development in downtown. And they produced a memo to the city council, I think the final one was in early January of 2011. Meanwhile, there was a city council retreat, which parking was a, downtown parking was a major issue, and staff was directed to come back with a comprehensive plan for this. There was a downtown parking concept plan that was produced in January, and then there was a joint work session of the city council and the planning board and the Economic Development Commission. And then that was followed the next month by a work session of the city council on downtown parking. And then in March, we produced the downtown parking omnibus. And so now we're here in May at a work session to discuss those items. And just the last two items on here, at some point in the future, as the chairman said, we'll be having a public hearing. I think that would wait until we're at a point where we feel we have a recommendation that the board is more comfortable with, maybe than you are now, unless you're comfortable with what you have before you. But I expect it to be a number of changes. And so that public hearing could happen in June, could happen in July. It really depends how long it takes the board to get to that point. And then, at some point, the board will make its recommendation to the city council, because this is formerly a city council referral. And if the city council decides to move ahead with any of these actions, they'll go through the normal three readings, one of which is another public hearing. So there'll be at least two opportunities, two public hearing opportunities in the coming months to discuss this. I would like to say that I think that in the interim, there probably should be a report, an interim report from the planning board, so we don't keep the city council waiting too long to just give them an update. And maybe it comes out of next week's meeting, or it could come out of today's, tonight's meeting, I suppose, just to say, you know, where we are in terms of progress and so forth, and we can talk about that later in the meeting. So some of the issues that we talked about, this, staff has been doing a lot of work and did a lot of work with the focus group. A lot of the information that we developed during that process went into the focus group report. But a couple of the big issues are, have to do with the supply and demand. The high Hanover parking facility, not what a T stands for, but high Hanover parking facility has been reaching capacity more frequently each year, and expanding the times of year during which it occasionally reaches its capacity, so not only during the peak seasons. And the other part is that on-street occupancy, particularly around Market Square, is consistently above 85 percent. And general practice is that you aim for an 85 percent occupancy rate, because that's just enough really to make sure this continual turnover. And when you get above that rate, then people start circling the block, and a large percentage of the traffic that's on the street is actually people who are circling the block looking for parking spaces, rather than people who are going anywhere. And I think it's, one thing that's important is that, to note, is that parking management policies of the city, the extent to which we create more supply, the rates that we have proposed, that staff have proposed, and the city council has enacted, and the hours of operation are really about providing capacity and ensuring turnover for businesses. And it's, you know, there is a revenue component to this, but the primary purpose of these things is really about turnover, and not particularly about revenue generation. Just a summary of, this is the information again that we had given to the, we developed for the focus group, because a lot of it didn't exist before, and we did a lot of work on this, especially in the private spaces side. We knew the public spaces. So in 2010, we had just over 2,000 parking spaces that were public spaces, and about 1,625 private spaces that we could count. That was as best we could count. And so about 56 percent public, 44 percent private. So it's a good sharing of the responsibility between the public sector and private property owners. Parking issues for the future, how much parking is needed? The parking focus group said that we should have between 2.1 and 2.2 spaces per thousand square feet of floor area on average across the downtown. And we're a little bit short of that. We're about 2.0 right now, according to the, according to the focus group report. So, but that is the, kind of a key question, is do we want to follow the focus group's report and target it at 2.1 to 2.2 spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area? And that's looking at it now, so we have shortfall now of around 300 spaces, which could be filled by the Worth Lot Garage. But if we have any growth, we need to provide more parking spaces. So the question is, who should build parking to serve future growth? Should it be the city? Should it be developers? Should it be a combination? And then related to that, who should pay for new parking? If it's, if the city is, if the city is to build it, should the city be, should taxpayers be doing all of the, or a good chunk of the cost of it? Should, how much of it should be paid by users, people who are actually parking there? And how much should be paid by property owners and/or developers? The process we've tried to do is have, the concept has been that developers, property owners would provide their own parking, and if they couldn't provide their own parking, they would make a payment in lieu to the city, so the city could provide parking. But the problem has been that the payments have been so low that the city has not been able to do that. So that's the relationship between who builds the parking and the parking, the payment in lieu is a very close relationship. Another issue is location, you know, provide parking where it is needed. A lot of people have looked at the, at the Parrot Avenue lot as a potential source of parking spaces, but really the need right now is more on the other side of the downtown. The Congress Street, Islington Street, Maplewood Avenue area is an area where there's a lot of development that needs to have parking close to it in order to support filling up the space in those buildings. And there's going to be more growth in the northern tier as you go past the Portwalk Lot 3 to where the western is going to be, and then the other side of the railroad tracks toward, toward North Mill Pond. We'll need to find a place in that area eventually to provide parking. And a crucial thing is the timing of when this happens, and when we make changes in zoning. The idea of the parking omnibus has been that all of these things work together, that we build a parking garage at the Worth Lot, which provides the short-term shortage, I mean, addresses the short-term shortage, the 300 spaces that we need to achieve the target that's in the focus group report. And that, the idea has been that we would change zoning to reflect the fact that we're providing more parking. So the converse of that is if we don't provide the parking, then maybe it's not a good time to change the zoning and loosen things up. And there are consequences of delaying action. There's a long lead time, as was presented in the work session and public meetings on this, a long lead time to build the garage, and we have potential loss of the parking spaces at the, at the Portwalk, the 110 or whatever it is, parking spaces there that are, that can be lost at any time, starting very soon. I'm not sure exactly when the timeline for that is, but I think it was a two-year timeline, and we're into our, well into our first year on this. Just to give you a sense of what the numbers in the focus group report mean, this is a chart that shows three lines. The lower line is how many parking spaces are needed at two spaces per thousand square feet of floor area. The middle line is how many spaces would be needed at 2.1 spaces. And the upper line is how many parking spaces would be needed at 2.2 spaces. And at the left end, the left end of the chart is where we are now, where it says 0 percent. That's no growth at all. So right, right now, you can see that at 2.0 spaces, we're just about on target right now, but the report recommends between 2.1 and 2.2. So we're about 200 spaces short at 2.1 spaces, and about 370 spaces short at 2.2 spaces. But, so that's where we are right now, and, you know, it depends how much growth we foresee in the downtown. So looking at this, this is just totally hypothetical, but if you had 2.5 percent growth in floor area in the downtown over some period of time, then you'd be looking at needing another 100, 100 or so parking spaces, just to address that need. So again, it's, the Worth Lot Garage could address the immediate need, but ultimately as parking, as development happens, we'll need to provide more parking. And so the question is, does development provide the parking, or do, does the city provide the parking? Here's a, just a, again, a summary of looking at this in a slight, slight different, slightly different way. The top line is, again, looking at 2010, when the focus group did its report, there was a demand between 3,800 and 4,000 parking spaces, depending on whether you're looking at the 2.1 spaces per thousand square feet, or the 2.2 spaces per thousand square feet. We actually had 3,600, 3,700 parking spaces. So our shortfall was somewhere in the range, as I showed you on that graph before, between 175 and 360 parking spaces. Add the Worth Lot Garage, which is, probably is going to be between 250 and 300 spaces of net increase. So that would bring us just about in balance, somewhere between the 125 space surplus and 110 space shortfall. But if you get a 3 percent increase in floor area, then that, you know, brings you down to a shortfall again. So that's just another way of looking at that, at that graph. Our current zoning ordinance, the revised zoning ordinance that we adopted in December 2009, require one space per hundred square feet for restaurants, no required spaces at all for ground floor uses, other than restaurants, and one space per thousand square feet of upper floor uses. So this is overall a lower standard than the 2.1 or 2.2. Now, it might be, when you consider, if you remember back to the initial slide that, where I showed you, there was about a 50-50 split between the parking that was provided by the city and the parking that's provided by private property owners, maybe one per thousand rather than two per thousand makes more sense. If the city continues to provide public parking, continues to provide, you know, additional parking garages in the downtown. And then the current zoning ordinance requires a payment in lieu of providing required parking spaces, or allows for a payment of $2,100 per space that's not provided. In July 2010, these are the, these are the key recommendations of the focus group. Eliminate off-street parking requirements in the CBA and CBB districts, with the exception that spaces should be required for projects on lots that are 20,000 square feet or greater, and with 40,000 square feet or more of gross floor area. And the statement was that we should be looking at a two-space per thousand ratio for those properties. And the second key item related to zoning is repealing the option to make a payment in lieu of providing required off-street parking. So those are the two zoning requirements, recommendations. But then you have to remember that there are the other five priority recommendations from the focus group, creating additional off-street parking, specifically focusing on the Worth Lot, creating a parking enterprise fund, providing limited free and low-cost parking for employees and residents, providing variable on-street parking rates and durations, and investing some revenues in downtown enhancements. But those are all non-zoning issues, the two top ones are the zoning ones. In January 2011, we provided the concept plan, which was developed from that and from other discussions with the city council and the Economic Development Commission. Again, eliminate or modify the off-street parking requirements in downtown overlay district, pretty much from the focus group. Eliminate or modify the provision allowing payment in lieu of providing required off-street parking. And part of the reason it has modified instead of simply eliminate was that there was, that was where the discussion about residential uses started to come into play, and whether they should be completely exempt from, from the off-street parking requirements. And then the non-zoning one, again, the Worth Lot, creating the parking enterprise fund and providing variable on-street parking rates. And these have moved forward through the city council in various ways. We had a joint work session with the, the planning board, city council, and Economic Development Commission. And the questions we asked, again, who should provide parking? And specifically, should some large parcels and buildings or uses be required to provide some or all of their parking, as recommended by the focus group? So that was a question there. And the second question, which really came out of the Economic Development Commission, was should residential uses be required to provide some or all of their parking? And then there was a, then related to that is that residential-commercial balance that the Economic Development Commission is so concerned about, limiting residential uses in the CBA and CBB district, but balancing that by relaxing some of the residential density standards around the periphery in the MRO and MRB districts. Probably this is too detailed to go through. This is a slide we used at the joint work session, just going through all the details of those questions, but I think I can pass on those right now. Which leads us to the parking omnibus. And it was to revise off-street parking requirements in downtown. And I would say that the, the intent was to aim for 2.2 spaces per thousand square feet, but we didn't do that. We actually had a higher, a higher recommendation, and that we think is probably too high. And we want to go back toward aiming for that 2.2 spaces per thousand square feet, including public and private spaces. So the question then is how much of that is, should be required of private developers, and how much of it should be assumed as a responsibility by the city? Another recommendation of the omnibus was to increase the payment in lieu to $10,000 per space for non-residential uses, and not to provide the option for residential uses. Those are the two parking recommendations, and you can see that there were the residential development-related recommendations, establishing ceilings on the amount of residential floor area in the CBA and CBB districts, and increasing the allowable densities in the MRO and MRB districts. Right now, each district requires 7,500 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit. We're recommending that the, the density be increased, so there's only 3,500 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit in the MRO district, and 2,500 square feet per dwelling unit in the MRB district. And I believe the 3,500 is about equivalent to the general residency district, so it's, which is usually that area that's right abutting the MRO district. And then there are a few lots on Islington Street that we had previously proposed zoning to MRB, and we still think that's appropriate, so that's included in the recommendations as well. Again, the March 2000 draft, which is the omnibus that you have, proposed two spaces per dwelling unit for single-family and two-family, one and a half spaces for dwelling unit for multifamily, and one space per 200 square feet of gross floor area for non-residential uses over 20,000 square feet. And as I said, we think that's too high a recommendation. So at this point, I think we, our recommendation would be to move toward the focus group recommended ratio of 2.2 spaces per thousand square feet. And there are different ways to do this in order to address the concern about the smaller uses. One is to only apply it to the upper floor uses, the way we do right now. Another is to apply a higher ratio and then deduct a higher number of spaces, which is similar to also something we do right now. The payment in lieu of providing required off-street parking, the cost to provide a municipal garage space is estimated to be $25,000 without the land cost, or $30,000 with land cost. With the Worth Lot, we had, we already owned the land, so it would only cost us $25,000. But if we had to go out and buy land for another parking garage in the northern tier, it would cost us more. And the current payment of 2,100 per space is less than 10 percent of the cost of constructing a space. And the proposed increase to 10,000 per space would be about a third of the cost to the city providing a parking space. Now, if you recall into the old zoning ordinance, we had a, we had this very complicated provision where there was a three-for-one replacement in, I'm not sure how you call it, three-for-one credit, I guess, for providing structured parking spaces. Or a structured parking space was seen to be used three times, so you only had to provide one-third of the ratio you would otherwise provide. We've already taken care of that by reducing the parking requirement. So we were used to have a one per, one space per 250 square feet, and we've dropped it to one per 1,000. We've already cut that by a quarter. So that, that three-to-one no longer applies in our, in our downtown. So this one-third, the 10,000 per space being one-third of the cost of providing a parking space is a real number. It's not a number that you would then divide by three. We've already divided it by, by four, really, to get there. So it's a, it's kind of confusing, but I think that that's, there's always been a, almost a double counting of, of the cost of the parking space and to the city. So I guess the questions are, should an in lieu option be available if, if the payment is not large enough for the city to create parking? You know, do we want to continue what we're doing right now, is really frustrating people by asking them to pay money and then not being able to do anything with it? That's the first question. The second question is, should the in lieu option be available to all properties regardless of size? Or as the focus group recommended, well, actually, that wasn't their recommendation. I guess the, the recommendation was that the larger properties provide parking, but you could say that the in lieu payment is only, could only be available to smaller properties, or to all uses, or should it only be available to residential uses or to non-residential uses? And should the in lieu option be available for 100 percent of the required spaces, or for only a portion? I mean, all of these issues have come up in discussions, and this is the range of discussion that I think is open to you tonight. I ran through a couple of scenarios, just to give you a sense of what some of these things might mean. The first scenario is for two-story, 20,000-square-foot buildings, so 10,000 square feet per story. And two different options. On the left, something similar to what we have right now, no requirement for ground floor uses, but a requirement of 2.2 spaces per thousand square feet for the upper floor uses. And on the right, a slightly different way of doing it, two and a half spaces per thousand square feet, but subtracting 30 spaces. And they come out fairly similar, but they're just, some of them treat smaller buildings more advantageously than, than others do. So in each case, there's around 20 parking spaces that would be required for that 20,000 square foot building. And the payment in lieu at 10,000 a space would be about 200,000, and the cost to the city would be about 600,000. So there's a, so that, basically, the developer, if the developer were not paying, providing any spaces, and were doing it all through payment in lieu, they would be paying about a third of the cost of providing their parking spaces, and the city would be paying two-thirds of the cost. That's just one way to look at that. Similarly, with a four-story, 40,000 square foot building, it's approximately double, although it doesn't work that quite double, because in the previous, in the two-story case, the developer pays for half of the floor area in the, on the, on the left-hand side, and this one, he pays for three-quarters of the area, because he pays for three floors with a free first floor. So it's, again, it's about, about a one-third, two-thirds relationship, actually, in this case, it's about a, yeah, about a one-third, two-thirds relationship between what the developer would pay and what the city would have to pay for the part to create, to replace the parking spaces. And then the fifth scenario is for a five-story, 60,000-square-foot building, and you can see the numbers again. So the, in this case, the developer, if the developer wanted to buy their way out of all the parking spaces, they would pay about a million dollars, and the city would have to, if the city were going to provide those parking spaces, the city would pay about $3, $3 million to, to provide those spaces. And I can give you all these numbers later, or we can go back over them if you want to. So that's all we, I have on the agenda right now for the parking issues. I just quickly want to go through the last couple of things. In the residential, the residential uses in the, in the central business districts, the issue that the Economic Development Commission has raised is the shifting balance of upper floor space. There's fewer daytime patrons for downtown businesses. The fewer office, the less office space you have, the more people who are living downtown, you have maybe more activity at night, but fewer people downtown going to restaurants, buying things, and so forth. The proposal of the Economic Development Commission is to establish a limit on the percentage of floor area for residential uses in those districts, similar to the existing limit that we have in the business district. And the key challenge is that applying a limit on each lot may be too restrictive, because it requires every lot to have the same rules. And some, sometimes you'd like to have one building that would be office, and one building that would be residential. But, but if you don't, if you don't apply it on a lot-by-lot basis, it's not clear how you would ensure the desired mix of, of uses. And then in the residential density, I already mentioned this, the, the densities that are allowed in the MRO and ARB districts now don't reflect the existing development patterns. So the proposal is to increase the allowable densities, to adjust the dimensional requirements to be consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods, and to allow for more residents in this, in this periphery to support downtown businesses. So just in summary, here are the issues that we want to talk about. The number of parking spaces, should there be any requirement for parking in the downtown? If so, what should that target ratio be? Should that ratio be for all properties, or only for the larger ones? Should there be a payment in lieu of providing spaces? Should that option be available if we still require any parking spaces? If so, what should the amount per space be? Should that be for all spaces, or only for a portion of the spaces? It should be for all uses, or only for non-residential uses? And should there be, should we limit residential uses in the, in the central business districts? And should we increase residential density in the surrounding districts? I think that is, that's everything. So I'll just leave that up for now.
Rick, do you have a copy of that?
Do I have a copy of it?
No.
I don't have a copy of that, but I'll leave that up for now if you want. Oh, you mean the whole presentation? Yeah, I can, I can get it out to you afterwards, yeah.
Could you please?
I will do that, yeah.
Thank you.
Anthony?
Rick, what's, what is the status of the Worth Lot? Is that moving forward, or?
Well, it, it's moving forward more slowly than, than was originally expected. There was some opposition that came up at the last city council meeting. I don't know whether Eric might want to talk about that, but the, and that's, I guess, a reason for the planning board to slow down on this, because we don't, as I said at the beginning, we don't really want to move ahead with this if the Worth Lot is not going to move ahead, because we're not going to, we're not going to have a, some, the relief valve for the existing shortages that we have. Did you want to say?
Yeah, there were quite a few speakers at the public hearing on the bond issue, and they all spoke against the garage. And so the council also had some data from staff showing revenues from the garage and how that worked out. And we were, we had some questions about the revenue projections, and the staff's going to come back in July for a work session where we can, in a less formal environment, the council can hash out some of the details and, and then reconsider it then.
Can you just speak up a little louder, please?
Sure. Want to repeat anything, or? Sure. We had a public hearing on the bond issue for the garage, and there were a number of speakers who came out, all of them against the garage. So after that was concluded, the council deliberated up on the deus there, and the staff had created a revenue projection for the garage. And some of the counselors had some questions about the revenue model, and also about the design of the garage, and in terms of how it would affect Von Moll and those types of things. And I think those were all good questions. I couldn't tell whether the council was in favor or against the garage as a concept, but there were questions, and I think we did postpone it until July meeting, after the budget is done, and it will allow us to look at the garage again and consider it at that time. And that'll be in a work session, which is easier sometimes for the counselors to have a conversation, rather than up on the deus there.
Anthony? If you guys want to pull these mics right up close to you, so.
So would, would that ultimately then, in July, be like an up or down vote on the idea, or?
No.
No?
In July, we have, I think we're going to have a work session.
Okay.
Which is, and there's different ways to proceed. I mean, there could be an up or down vote on the bond, which, if it was voted up, all systems go. Another concept that was floated was, we would appropriate the money for a design, and that could be a few hundred thousand dollars for an architectural, engineering, whatever design, that then... That then, the council, oh, the council needs to, sometimes people need to see a picture of what it is you're trying to do. And then it's, okay, I understand now, and then they bond their balance. But that's all, this is still in the formative stages.
Mel?
But I think it would be fair to say that because you're missing this budget cycle, Worth is not likely to be done within a year.
Oh, no.
Not even close.
The timeline is, there's many months of design work that needs to be done, and really, the delay until July is only a six-week delay. It's not, we don't have to wait an entire fiscal year if we decide, yeah, because we could, yeah, we can decide in July to go forward, and it would be fine.
Rick, did you? I was just going to say also, related to that, is that the, the bond authorization, as I understood it, the bond authorization vote was really like the go-ahead vote, but it didn't, it's not really tied to the budget since you weren't going to issue the bond until sometime in early 2012.
Right, because we can, you can vote to authorize, authorize the bond, but then they don't actually issue the bond for many months later, depending on the bidding and things like that. So I have some questions about the presentation, I guess.
Sure.
I had a lot of questions.
Want me to go back to something?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of issues here.
Yes, there are.
So I guess I'll tackle the one that was last, because I remember the things that are last. I don't remember anything before that.
If you'd like me to go back, I can certainly go back.
The idea of trying to maintain balance between, I guess, retail, residential, and office space is, I've heard that from the EDC, I've heard it from the council, and even from the planning board. And since this is a work session, I'm just going to throw a brainstorming idea, know of bad ideas and brainstorming, right? So here's, you guys can tell me what you think, because I'm not an economist, I'm not a developer, I don't know what's right or wrong. But when we're trying to, the idea is to try to, the, the fear is, we're moving too much in the direction of residential in the downtown, and we're trying to do a little pushback. And I see what, I share the concern that you have in the, in your conclusion, that it's kind of a heavy hand to demand a certain percentage on any given lot to be this or that type of use. And so, and since we're talking about parking requirements, I put this idea out there. What if we had no parking requirement for any non-residential use, no matter what floor you're on? And I, and that would, without being as draconian as a percentage rule, it would still provide an incentive to non-residential uses. Office use, you wouldn't have to provide parking. I also think that it wouldn't, in my very limited experience, when developers are trying to sell office space, the reality is that their tenants say, where's the parking anyway? So I don't, I don't really believe that we would then cause a big problem with people. People would want to solve the parking problem to make, make their properties marketable. Thirdly, when you looked at the, the table, who pays for parking? You had taxpayers, users, developers, and some other. I think in the, if you look at where we get most of our money, or to pay for parking right now, it's been users. Taxpayers don't contribute anything, luckily. Developers, because their in-lu fees are so little, pay for the public parking. They provide their own private parking spaces, and that should be part of the ratio, but in terms of public spaces, they don't, it doesn't, they don't provide very much. And we've still been able to provide a good amount of parking, and with the Worth lot as well. And so what I'm saying is, I think if you went to a model to, this kind of does two things. It encourages office development, which I think we want to encourage, and it follows the traditional model we've had in town of the users paying for the parking, because the tenants, the employees of that office development would, in all likelihood, use the public parking facilities provided by the city, and those are self-supported. I'll just put that out there as an idea. It's just, I just thought about it right now. I haven't done any research on it, but.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I start, I need to, for the record, announce to the planning board that some members of the now-disbanded focus group had an informal meeting to just discuss some of these omnibus issues. And just to reinforce the old axiom that no good deed goes unpunished, someone complained to the city that they thought that was an impermissible meeting. In a conversation with the city attorney, the city attorney said that this does not, in fact, create an impermissible conflict of interest. So for the record, I was instructed by the city, or requested by the city attorney, to say that for everyone's benefit.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you. So having said that, I like Eric's idea, because part of the, part of the parking focus group was basically the, the concept that the city provides parking, just like the city provides water, provides sewer. The difference here is that this can pay for itself. Well, water and sewer pays for itself also by, by rates. And if you look at the dollars, it will pay for itself. So just, the big-picture concept is to, to have the city provide the parking infrastructure and charge for it. And the revenue is certainly sufficient, as in my recollection, for the Worth lot to pay for the Worth lot. And, and Eric's point is really well-taken. This, this is a, this is a balancing act. It's a balancing act between residential and commercial, and whether that commercial is office or retail. I am terribly concerned about stifling through payment in lieu, you know, $10,000 is an enormous amount of money when you, I mean, maybe one space, it's not much of a hit, but a developer, I am not a developer, and, like Eric, I'm not a developer. I think it is going to be crucial for this board to conduct public hearings, because when I look at a lot, this is 20,000 square feet, you know, I mean, okay, 20,000 square feet, that's.
Well, it depends, right?
That's a half acre, give or take. Some people have that vision thing, where they can look at that piece of property and see, you know, a building and there's all sidewalks and all this. I look at a piece of property and just say, oh, that's a nice piece of property. Those are the people that we need to hear from, because those are the people that are going to get impacted by this. So I, I just think, regardless of what we do here tonight, public hearings are going to be just absolutely vital, because I'm not a developer, I'm looking around the table, we have one developer, and, and you know better than us, looking at a piece of land and, and seeing the building and the square footage and all that. A lot of this is going to be self-correcting, because you're not going to build condos to sell for $800,000 and say, oh, by the way, you got to, you got to park down at the Parrot Avenue lot. You know, they might do that in the Macintosh building, where the condos are affordable, or maybe even 55 Congress. But if somebody's going to build something new and something nice, the market forces are going to drive the parking more than, in my opinion, more than the regulations. So public hearings, man, let's start them next week, I mean, as quickly as we can do it, because I think Eric is quite correct. This is a very complex, very complex thing, and I really, I fear for the unintended consequences. As a downtown resident, I park in the Parrot Avenue lot, I walk back and forth, it doesn't bother me a bit.
Yes, it does.
I think, it's healthy, it's healthy, it's good. I think, I think the residents downtown are sort of the unsung heroes of how this community has evolved as it has. Because if you go to a Milford, or a Nashua, or, or a.
Concord.
Concord, or, you know, 5:30, 6 o'clock.
Roll up the sidewalks.
Roll up the sidewalks. You go to Portsmouth, and you see people all over the place. I get up in the morning, I don't want to make breakfast, I go down to the bagel shop. I'm working, I don't want to make lunch, I go over to wherever. I don't want to cook dinner, I walk down to Dos Burritos, you know, cheap tacos, Taco Tuesdays, you know? That's the kind of thing that we cannot endanger. So, anyway, I'll get off my soapbox, so, sorry.
I, I too, oh, I'm sorry, William?
Bring up a question, because I'm honestly sitting on the fence of whether developers should provide parking for residences. Do you, or you know of other residents that live in your area, have trouble finding parking at all?
From my building?
From your building, or your perspective, as a downtown resident, have you ever had trouble finding parking?
Well, trouble finding parking, define that. Right in front of my building? Absolutely.
Yeah. But have you always been able to find a space so you can park and go home? Or does it take a while, sometimes?
Parrot Avenue. You know, the only time, now that we've lost a number of spaces to the teachers, which is a discussion for another time, that lot is getting difficult to park in, because if there's an event at the, at the music hall, it's full. It, that's it, you're done. During the day, it is virtually full by about 7:30, used to be 8:15 or so, you could get in there and maybe find a spot. But now it's shrunk in size for available parking. So I, I don't know how to answer your question. I think the answer is no. It isn't, because living downtown, there are some things that you just live with. Drunks, motorcycles, and difficult parking. You know, that's just part of the deal. So I think the people that live downtown sort of expect that. Now, having said that, if I'm paying $800,000 for a condo, you bet I'm going to look for a parking place. That thing had better have a parking place right there in the building, or I'm not paying $800,000. And I don't know where that balance is, you know? What was it, 400,000, 500,000? That's why we need the public hearings to hear from developers, from people that, that are directly impacted by this.
Mel?
I wanted to agree wholeheartedly with Eric, which is always exciting. I, I really, I want to applaud the concept of incentives over punishment, and I, if there was a direct corollary between a payment in lieu and a parking spot, I'd be perhaps a little bit more supportive of that concept, but I haven't seen it. I think that residential, in addition to not being something that we want to encourage, I think, as Don points out, residential users probably do need at least a parking space to make a buy worthwhile, and you're seeing that more and more in the residential that's gone in downtown. The one thing I would point out in terms of payment in lieu, and even buying a parking spot, is that downtown businesses tend to buy municipal spaces for their workers. Not all, many. All of the downtown businesses that I've had the pleasure of working for have done that. And the result there is an income stream of a different nature. Now, I don't know what we're charging for a monthly space, but if you think about it, it's like financing, it's like payment in lieu, but we're financing it and not asking for it upfront. And there, the payment correlates to a spot.
So, Don?
If I also may elaborate a little bit, one of the, one of the interesting things that came up in our informal discussion after the focus group had disbanded, was that just that very thing, as a developer may build condos, and, and it was just an idea, it's like Eric says in a work session, there are no, no silly ideas. Someone said, well, why don't you have the developer enter into an agreement with the city? That may have even been your idea.
It may have been my idea.
It may have been. I will give credit where credit is due. The developer enters into an agreement with the city for a 10-year lease on a spot in the garage. $10,000, or some number, goes with that property. It's like deeded parking. And again, the details were a little fuzzy, but, you know, that is value-added to the unit. It doesn't require the developer to, you know, pay all this money in terms of, you know, in lieu of, but in essence, in essence, it does. But that payment in lieu is attached to the unit. That's the kind of stuff I think that public hearings will bring out, some, some very innovative ideas.
I think you just have to be careful, because you might be converting a capital to an operating cost, it gets treated differently. My sense is that you can also trust that if you create a vital downtown, the spots that are built by the city are going to sell. And, and, and having that sort of thing, I mean, one of the things that I know from the transportation guy and parking guy, the very nice man, whose name is now escaping me.
John Frederick?
Yeah. They don't like setting aside reserved spots in the Hanover Street Garage, I know that. He hadn't said, you can buy a space, but you don't get the same space every day.
Right, right.
Right.
So it's theoretically possible, you go out to lunch, and your space is gone, and you leave your space empty, you come back, the garage is full, even though you have a reserved spot.
Theoretically, that's not possible, because they're supposed to reserve for, I mean, they do account, but I don't know whether it works. But, but, yeah.
So by buy, you mean lease?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not advocating for that, because I think that's too formal. I, I mean, I think, I would rather see the elimination of both a non-residential parking requirement and a non-residential payment in lieu, with the notion that if you incent commercial development in the downtown, both office and retail, you create a more vital downtown that's going to actually fill up the parking spaces, and therefore, your parking revenues are going to be at a level that is, that's sustainable.
Don?
Rick, I'd like to get some clarification on recommendation one in the omnibus report, which talks about a parcel of 20,000 square feet or larger, and involving 40,000 square feet or more of gross floor area. So.
Where are you looking?
I'm sorry, page two, bottom of page two.
That was from the focus group report.
Right. No, actually, this is, yes, this is the omnibus, but I'm.
But it was, but it was recommended in the focus group.
Correct, and I'm referring to it strictly in the omnibus. So that, that was one thing. So any, any lot greater than 20,000 square feet or building greater than that. So that's a debatable point, and I don't need to settle this, or we don't, I don't feel we need to settle it tonight. However, the interesting thing for me is that on page three, the requirements for single-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, townhouses, that sort of thing, requiring two spaces, one and a half spaces, two spaces. Am I correct in assuming that should one do a, a small development, those requirements would come into play? Let's say you did four condos or something, condo to building.
Could I, could I just make a clarification?
Sure, that's why I'm asking the question.
Because the, there's a number of changes that changed from, the number of things that I changed in my recommendations from what the focus group said, and I was, I was trying to make that, that point as I was going through the presentation, I think it was just maybe too much in the presentation. The focus group said no parking requirement at all, except for lots greater than 20,000 square feet.
20,000, correct.
And buildings greater than 40,000 square feet. When I, when I did it, first of all, I found that really difficult to imagine how to implement the lot size and the building size together. So I, from my recommendation, I dropped the lot size, and just said only for buildings greater than, in this case, it was 20,000 square feet, so I changed the number, because one of, there had been a lot of discussion about that, what that number should be, and if you recall, one of the counselors at the, at the council meeting, I believe it was, I don't think it was a work session, I think it was a council meeting, said that maybe 20,000 square feet was too high, that we should even go lower than that. And so there's a lot of, you know, as you said, there's a lot of debate about what that threshold would be, but I felt it was better to go with just the building size and not worry about the lot size, because the lot size, you're for, you're encouraging people to split up lots, and maybe that's what, that's the unintended consequence.
We'll suddenly see some 19,900 square foot lots.
Yeah, right, exactly, yeah, right. So, and I was trying to get away from also the idea of having any threshold that is a, you know, a very valuable threshold to be under. You know, you want to have something where you are just, you start, if you're, if you're going to follow the focus group recommendations, I would like to have something that you, when you get over a certain threshold, you start getting some, you don't go all, in other words, the way the focus group recommendation was written, at 19,000, you had no recommendation, and at 20,000. and at 20,000, you had, uh, or 40, at 39,000, you had no, no requirement. At $40,000, all of a sudden, you had to pay 2.2, uh, for 2, provide 2.2 spaces for all of the 40,000 square feet. So it's a huge incentive not to build a building that's 40,000 square feet.
Correct, but that really wasn't the focus of my question.
No, but I want to, I want to go to the next part, which is the residential piece.
Okay, please.
I think it's a residential piece, is your question.
Yeah, actually, I am residential.
And so then, there was a lot of discussion, again, as you recall, about the, about the, at the Economic Development Commission, about the question about residential. And this is where that other discussion came in, post-focus groups. The focus group represents one group, the Economic Development Commission represents another group, so we're bringing all these ideas in. And the idea that came in was that they, they really didn't want to, um, provide, use the parking requirements to provide a, a big, um, incentive to go residential rather than non-residential. And that, and if you look at a flat number, a flat per square foot number, it can really be beneficial to, you know, to push you, push you in one direction or the other. So my initial thought, and when I did the, um, the omnibus, my portion of the omnibus, was to continue a residential requirement, or go back to a specific residential requirement and have that separate from the non-residential. What I've said in, in this is I've said, you know, I've, I've kind of gone away from this, and in, in this recommendation, I've said, "Let's go back to the 2.2 spaces per thousand, regardless of use."
But my question really focuses on if I'm a developer and I have a project in front of you and I'm required two spaces per dwelling unit.
I'm saying we're not going to, we're not proposing that.
A number of spaces, whatever it is. Can I seek relief from the board of adjustment with a variance if providing those two spaces is not economically feasible?
Well...
Or, or whatever the number of spaces is.
And, and so that has nothing to do with residential and non-residential because the same question applies to both.
Okay, that's fair. Would one seek a variance?
If there's something about your parcel that sets it apart from other parcels and that, that something about your parcel makes it, makes it, something about the parcel itself makes it uneconomical to do that. Not that, not that there's a common condition to everything else, but if something about your parcel makes it infeasible to, to do what the zoning says.
Well, I'm sure some attorney will find that, you know, find that, so...
Right, yeah.
Okay, that was really my question. I wanted to see at least there was some relief.
But I think that before you, before, I think before you rely on variances, I think you want to make sure that the, that the, the regulation itself is appropriate. So let's assume, for the time being, I mean, I'd, I'd like to start with the assumption, getting away from what was in the March document, but going to what I've presented here, that we're talking somehow about in the range of 2.1 to 2.2 spaces per thousand square feet, regardless of use, we want to preserve, we want to maybe have some smaller, smaller uses be exempt altogether as the, as the focus group recommended. Either that or, you know, a different number, but let's just think about it, all, all uses, and then, and in approximately the same requirement.
And I think it would be enormously helpful to have this right in front of us.
Yeah, right.
For me, I can't speak for anyone else.
Well, I had, my initial draft of this was, you know, there were graphs and charts...
We liked that.
All, all over the place.
We liked that.
It was just way too complicated, so we tried to simplify it. But, um, I, I sometimes get into these things and I, you know, late at night when I'm doing the spreadsheets, they just get really, really complicated, so...
Okay, thank you.
But I, but I think that the, that the question is, do we not, not require any, do we, do we require, is there a different requirement between residential and non-residential? Is there a different requirement between small and large? And are there some uses or some sizes that don't have to provide any parking?
Which, which leads to my basic request, I guess you could say, that developers need to weigh in on this. The northern tier is going to get developed. Is that going to be developed with or without parking? What kind of buildings could go in there? That, I'm thinking of where Cindy Anne Cleaners is now, you know, that, what can go there? And does, is there enough for parking? These are the kinds of things that I don't have a clue about.
Could I, could I ask, I mean, because that was the intent of the focus group, to provide the input from the developers? And, and do you feel that that was not enough input from the developers on this? Because that was really the point of the focus group.
I think the focus group got good input from the developers, but not all developers. I, I don't mean every developer in the, in the seacoast region, but, but those people that, that did that were people that were from downtown. And, uh, you know, Bob Thorson and, and McNabb and, and Jay McSherry and, you know, Peter Eggleston and others, you know, and, and of course, we had the city staff working with us too. Our recommendations have been, let me choose my words carefully here, have been added on. I mean, we, we, as a group, did not expect, okay, here's the document, take it 100%, here's what it is. Things have been added on to that, which really were kind of opposed to some of the views that we had. For instance, you know, our basic assumption or basic recommendation was that the city get in the parking business, period. Build garages, you know, charge people for it, and the revenue stream will pay for it. The numbers, I believe, showed that. Which, from a perspective of a developer downtown, some of that input was, listen, if I have to pay X number of dollars per, per space, that adds, I don't remember the exact numbers, but somebody said it was like $4 to $7 per square foot for the cost of a building. And when you look at that, and you look at P's, where you don't have to pay anything, and you go, going, okay, being downtown's really nice, we like that, our employees love it, but it's going to cost us X. We go to P's, that's really nice too, and it costs us zero for parking. Those are real dollars. So I, I think, I don't really know how to answer your question. I really don't. We got input from developers. Was it sufficient? In light of all of the other things that have been added to the report and the other recommendations and the changes, I think I would, I would have to answer and say, probably we didn't get enough. We got enough for the task that we were charged with, but that task has actually changed somewhat, and it's expanded, and that's okay. Does that answer your question?
Well, I, I guess, if I could, I guess the, the, um, I'm not sure that we, that public hearings make sense until you have something to react to, you know, at this point. Because we've, if, a public hearing could be very wide open, and then you wouldn't, you know, then you'd say, okay, we've got those opinions, now we have to get, you know, the other, the other parts of the community's opinions, and then that, it kind of is an endless cycle. You know, if we, we go to, to one group, adjust the zoning to reflect their ideas, go to the next group, adjust the zoning, and then, then, then the first group is, is...
Doing a shooting at a moving target.
Yeah, right. So I think it's better to have, for the board to work towards something that, you know, based on all of the input we have from the focus group, from the Economic Development Commission, from your own experience, from staff, come up with something that you feel is, um, a doable, uh, set of changes to the zoning, um, in considering what's going on with the worth lot and all that sort of stuff, and then bring it to public hearing.
I agree wholeheartedly, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Paige, did you have a question?
Yeah, I guess on that point, I just wanted to say, just because there have been some changes, I don't think that, doesn't mean that we're not getting sufficient feedback from a certain group of people, and I know there are many, many other residents and people who I'm sure have thoughts about parking besides just that one particular group. So I would be open to trying to, you know, get some thoughts on paper and then have a public hearing. But I'd like to get back to some concrete issues, specifically the radical notion that Eric brought up about eliminating, um, the requirement for parking, and it's, it's definitely radical, but it's, it's intriguing. I think one thing that, that it allows us is, is kind of, um, you know, to think about the possibility of, or sort of what that allows us from a sustainability standpoint. You know, because part, part of what that maybe offers is the ability for us to move towards less parking, which from a sort of eco-municipality standpoint is an important goal, I think. I mean, it's great to have parking, and that's a need in the short term, and nobody wants to be driving around looking for parking when it's pouring rain or whatever, but, you know, as a community, we need to move in that direction. So I think that, that, you know, that's something that, that allows us to do. I guess I also wonder, um, since it's something that's just come up now, what unintended consequences might there be that might be problematic? Because I'm sure there are things that might come up out of that that I'm not going to think of.
I'm not, I'm not sure if, yeah. I'm not sure if this directly addresses your question, but one thing that concerns me, the, the idea of the city providing all the parking does make sense from a, just the cash flow point of view and, and, you know, providing an infrastructure. But one of the difficulties is, there's a, there's a serious timing issue. Uh, we've been working on the worth lot since sometime in the 1990s, I think, and it's been a long time we've been working on the worth lot, and it's taken us this long to create 300 spaces. Um, and development, if we, if we, if we, we're not able, as a city, we're not able to move fast to create parking spaces in line with increasing floor area in the downtown. So, um, one of the, you know, I've, I've done an analysis that is, it's kind of striking. I, it's so striking that I almost don't like to, to, to talk about it, but when you look at the port, the whole Parade Mall parcel, because of our, our former zoning and, and all the things that went on with that, um, there are, we're hundreds of spaces short. If you look at, at 2.2 spaces per thousand square feet, we're hundreds of spaces short for the parking that that demands. So it's not true that development will build the parking that it needs.
Right.
You know, it's, it's true that development will build what it can build and hope that the city will provide the parking. And unfortunately, the city takes a long time to build the parking. So the Worth Lot Garage is not going to make up for all the parking demand that is going to come out of, of the Hilton and...
In the short term.
It, it will, the, the Worth Lot itself will never make up that demand. There needs to be another parking garage somewhere else to make up that demand. Um, if, if it's true, if the focus group is correct in saying that we need to have 2.1 to 2.2 spaces per thousand square feet in the downtown, we're, we've, we've gone way short on that with that mixed-use development, which is a wonderful development, is a great, I'm not saying it's a bad development.
Right, right.
It's the kind of development we probably should have, it's got retail, it's got hotel, it's got apartments, it's got some office, um, but it's, uh, it's not going, it's not going to provide the parking that it demands because of how our zoning has worked. Um, so that's one argument in favor of requiring developers to provide their own, the parking that they demand because then they'll, they'll provide it. The bad, the downside is, it increases the cost of development, and it, and it may slow down development. So, you know, you have to make, you have to, you're almost taking your chances that the developer's going to, you know, we're not going to have more developments like that, that, that increase demand without, without providing parking.
Don?
Just one clarification, I just want to make sure that I'm clear. The, the hotel that was built had 127 rooms, as I recall, somewhere near that, and only required, because of the, I believe you've been quoted as calling it convoluted parking requirements, only needed 27 spaces, or something like that.
But if we, but if we take away all non-residential parking requirements in the downtown, it would have required none. So what, what we're talking about would have been less than that.
I, I understand. Now, you also talked about growth, a 3% growth.
Which is just a wild, you know, random number.
55,000 square feet.
Yep.
That's one building.
Yep.
So I, I still believe, and you know, unfortunately, or fortunately, whichever way, you know, as a card-carrying, free-market conservative, you know, I think the marketplace will, will determine, again, if you're going to build something, you'd better be able to provide parking, and I think the market will demand that more than the regulations would demand that.
But I, I guess my point about Portwalk is the market didn't provide, didn't demand it.
Doesn't always happen.
Because they didn't have to.
Right, right, right. And the market, I'm saying, the market, if you don't have regulations, the market doesn't address it. Because our example is that we have, it didn't happen at Portwalk.
Well, you got me.
One of my, um, concerns with requiring the, especially larger lots to provide their own parking, is that they will provide it a surface lot style. And I think those are rather hideous.
Right.
So I don't, and then I don't want to have more regulations saying you can't do surface lots, and then we're just regulating everything. But anyway, and again, so the benefit of having, I understand the drawbacks, the timing issue, and the city is certainly slow to act, but we've been trying. The message should be out there. Sheraton got shot down. We had a lot of things that were shot down, the Westin, you remember that? Uh, but we were trying. It wasn't like we were just sitting on our hands. But there are a couple of benefits to having the public provide the garage. Number one, we avoid the surface parking lot blight, like, I would call it a blight. And number two, um, I believe you get more utility out of a public garage than you would all developers providing their own private spaces. So even though they would provide the need internally, it wouldn't be a shared resource, whereas the garage, you get that. So you get, you get more value, if you look at all the land collectively, you get more utilization of everyone's land by concentrating the parking into some municipal garages.
Mel?
I, I would, I, I had thought about hotels, and I think there may be a reason to carve out hotels in the, in the concept, even though I know our city manager likes hotels, so that there is some parking requirement for hotels. I'm still behind Eric's point, and I wanted to question the formulaic approach on the residential side, and, and maybe put back on the table the notion of number of spaces per residential unit as opposed to number of spaces per square foot, and then, and I thank Paige for reminding me about sustainability. I'd also want to encourage Live Workspace on the art side, and, and wonder whether we need something special for that.
I want to just chime in for a minute, and, um, I've, I've been on the wrong side of the pay in lieu of, um, to the two and a six figures, so, um, I, my thoughts are pretty simple, and it probably will strike a discord with a lot of people. I think, whether you knew it or not, Eric, you were correct in saying, we need to promote non-residential in the downtown. That's really what makes Portsmouth what it is. Once something goes to residential, it never goes back. It, it, you take that commercial office space and it's gone. My belief is that, um, any commercial, retail restaurant should be exempt. You don't pay for anything. If you want to have hotels, you do something with that. I think if you want residential, you should have to provide it. That's just my opinion. I think that we should have a tiered parking approach. I think for somebody coming from wherever they come from to pay $2 an hour at the High Hanover, to spend $20 to spend a day in Portsmouth, that's pocket change. I think maybe as you go out of, out of the High Hanover area, it's tiered where if you have workers that work at restaurants or whatever, that maybe they're paying 25 or 50 cents an hour, can park there for 10 hours. Don Coker always runs through my head when you say unintended consequences. My belief and, and what I'm hearing from, this is, this whole parking thing is the first item that I've seen in six or seven years I've been on this board, that I've been deluged with all kinds of different, um, voices that have said, hey, you know, the unintended consequence to me is if you make that, you know, 40,000 is 2.2 times whatever, I think what you're going to find is when that gets instituted, developers are going to go away, and by the time we all wake up and say, hey, wow, we're not getting any more development, that, that, that ship has left the dock, and to get it back is too late. It's, to me, it's, it's so simple and so painfully clear, it needs to be municipally driven, you know, all this payment in lieu of, what's it got us? What additional parking has it provided us?
Zero.
So to me, it's not like you're putting parking garages up and saying, "We're not going to charge a dime for it."
Right.
They're self-sustaining. Look, don't, you know, I look at, and I won't pick on businesses, but look at buildings in town that never paid a dime for parking. Are they part of the problem? Sure they are. So you bring a new guy in out of town who's, who's giving you a 50,000 square foot building that gives you a, a tax base that doesn't tax your school system, right? Isn't that the only kind of tax that you want? But yet, you're going to whack him for, you know, $10,000 a space that, that he's got to pay upfront? Where you build a, a garage, that's bonded over 20 years. So to me, if I'm a developer, I'm thinking, why would I want to come into Portsmouth? So my thing is simple. Promote non-residential, get rid of the parking fee, have a tiered parking approach, and let's, let's move forward, let's get it done. I mean, these people...
Is that a motion?
No, it's not. But, but again, my last point is that, you know, do we want these little surface lots and little kind of drive-unders and maybe tent spot? No. Let's take a lot that's dedicated to parking and make it multi-level. If it's going to be ugly, let it be ugly in one central spot, not that sprawl of a parking space here and one there. Let's keep the developers in here. I mean, I, I just look at, we all travel around, I, I look at other towns in New Hampshire, they're all beautiful, but I got to tell you, and I know I live here, but there's nothing around like Portsmouth. There really isn't.
Right.
So I think we keep it anyway, so...
Agreed.
A radical idea? Do you want a radical idea? Eric, you ready for even more radical? Think Burlington, Vermont. And I don't know if anybody's...
It's a microbrews.
Pedestrian mall.
Pedestrian, they block down the streets downtown. I had a, I was shopping at the Pick 'n Pay, I'm sorry, Hannaford's, it'll always be the Pick 'n Pay, always. And I ran into Doug Bates at the Chamber, he was the head of the Chamber, and Doug says, and he started railing about parking and this, he said, I hope you guys, you know, on and on and on. He said, I got an idea, and I'll give Doug credit for this. He said, why don't you block off the downtown? Move tables out, let stores come out, have the path like Burlington, Vermont does down the middle so the fire chief is still happy, the police is still happy, so you can get out, and build those parking garages around the periphery of downtown. They'll pay for themselves. And I thought, you know, that's really a very interesting idea. And I, it's not, you know, this is not part of the omnibus parking, but if we're going to throw ideas out there, I like that idea. You become a more walkable city. But it's going to take, you know, pretty, pretty strong city council to do that. Now, Maplewood, I'm sorry, Woodbury at the top, Hanover Street, it bears, down at the foot of Market, right there at, by a treesy, you know, State and Pleasant, and this is all walkable. That's a, yes?
And Route 1 North and South will go underground.
The big dig and...
Little dig.
A little dig.
Yeah. We didn't get into very many details.
Is that a problem?
We didn't get into great details.
Don't let it come up until it gets across the border.
I think that if you don't have a viable downtown, you can't turn part of it into a shopping mall, a pedestrian mall, and you can't pay for your parking either. So I think the primary motivation has to be what our chairman was saying and what Council Spear was saying, which is draw that vibrant business, non-residential sector back into the downtown. I mean, this does not mean roll over and play dead, I think you got to be very careful about your zoning. The other thing I would say to staff is that the multiple thousand square foot space, with limited exceptions, we're really talking about the northern tier. And I think we've got a, I mean, I think that's almost like, it sounds like penalty zoning because you've got a limited number of new building potentials out there and that's really where we want to see the elimination of the surface lots and the creation of more vibrant business office development.
So what is your recommendation for out there?
Oh, well, if I were to put a new zoning ordinance in front of us today...
You are.
I would say that we have in the CBD, Central Business, CBD and CBR, we would eliminate parking requirements for non-residential except for hotel. And hotel, and I would defer to you, but I think you need some sort of parking for hotels. And then I would impose a 1.5 space per unit of residential requirement. And I would create some sort of, what do you call it, special exception for true live-work. What, what do we do when you have like, it's like what you get with Concom, but not like that. Because what I don't want to do is create, put, put an additional burden on live-work that they have to go to the BOA all the time because it's just impossible. So I want to give them something where it's a pretty straightforward process, but it has to be proven that their live-work and kind of achieving that balance. That's my proposal.
Yeah, what you could do on the live-work is just make it that they, you know, if they're truly living and working there, are they commuting as much as somebody that just lives in a, in a house and commutes every day?
No.
You know, maybe that's something that...
So you get out of the residential if your live-work, if you can prove that your live-work is something...
Or maybe it's one space or something different.
Something like that.
But to me, the residential, I believe you got to provide it.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's critical and I think just, we got to keep retail. I mean, to me, I, you know, I look at, I look at small towns, these rural towns, their taxes are so high because all they have is residential. I look at these downtowns, you get a great tax revenue, it doesn't tax your school system. I mean, what more do you...
Sure.
You know, you look at Newington, for instance, I mean, they pay pennies on the dollar because it's all industrial. So to me, let's keep Portsmouth what it is.
And enhance it even.
Right. Anthony, and then Don.
What about the in lieu payment? If we're, if we're talking about residential spaces having to provide some level of parking, and when you look at downtown, it seems like, I'm not a developer, but it seems like there's a lot of this sort of mix where it's commercial on the first floor and residential on the floors above. And so if there's going to be requirements for those floors above to provide spaces, but at least some of what I've heard is you eliminate the in lieu payment possibility, that means they're going to have to provide those spaces. And I don't see with a lot of these developments right downtown, how would they, where would they put those spaces?
Again, that's part of, that's part of the mix of trying to keep, I mean, it's not super friendly to the residential piece, I understand that, but...
But I mean, I guess, I guess this is where I'm struggling with because I agree, I mean, I agree about promoting and protecting commercial use and development downtown, but I think what we're also hearing is that it's, it's because of the mix...
Right.
...that Portsmouth is so vibrant. And so if you go in a direction where you're almost making residential impossible...
Or make it a payment of X amount per space and maybe, you know, I don't know if that's one where you're allocating, you know, you pay $10,000 a, you know, per space or, I don't know, on the residential piece, I'm sure Rick can whip something up. Well, I'm just saying on that resi, I'm not, you know, my thing is, is just the huge volume of, you know, $600,000. That to me is shocking, but if you're looking at, maybe if it's two units or less, there's some tiered, I don't, I don't know on the residential piece, but maybe you pay 10,000 per space and if it's one and a half and you need three, it's 30,000. You know, I would think on the residential end where you're selling that right away, maybe it's not a big, as big of an issue as 600,000.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I guess one of the, I think that it does make sense from my point of view to, to get rid of the non-residential, if that's what we want to do, and to keep a requirement for residential and then to keep a high, as you say, maybe 10,000 payment per space or whatever it would be for the residential because it does get folded right into an initial mortgage. The, the thing that we have to think about, if we, if we did keep a requirement for residential and not for non-residential and we didn't have the payment in lieu, we would have the problem that we would have, because we have a lot of these that have been happening where a non-residential turns into a residential space. So the building's been designed, it's been designed with no parking, it's been designed as office space and then we, then five, 10 years later, somebody comes back and wants to turn that office space into residential space as a, like at Harbor Place, then there's, in Harbor Place, there was a place to park, but if you had another, if you had another development that was done with no parking, then you'd be, you'd be forcing them to go to the variant, to the variance route for parking and the city wouldn't get anything out of it. So I think that if you do keep a requirement for residential, you almost have to keep some kind of payment.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I think you have to keep in lieu because otherwise you're, it would become impossible.
Right, right.
So I... Paige?
Yeah, I guess to follow up on Anthony's point, part of why I raise the issue of unintended consequences is because I agree with Donald that residential is a key. In fact, the mixed nature of the downtown is a key to the success. And so I also wouldn't want to go too far the other direction in making it, because it's not really clear from the discussions within the report of the Economic Development Commission, you know, how much of a problem is the imbalance residential versus commercial? So if we go too far down the path of encouraging one over the other, I mean, to me, it's an irony because most communities are begging for residents in their downtowns, the type of thing you're talking about is a town. I mean, we're a city and most cities are dying for residents, so it's very easy to go the other direction, I think. So, you know, that's why I think we got to be careful about how we do it and not doing it in a way that's going to be sort of encourage that other.
All right. Don?
Steve Alley did a, sort of an informal study a number of years ago, and this was a number of years ago, 10 or 15 years ago, about the tax revenue of downtown versus the expense. And his numbers were, were pretty overwhelming in that, boy, you really want to have downtown a lot of development because it's a moneymaker for the city. It, the, a, a single-family residence is a net loser. I mean, it really is. And that's why you say like in Strafford and Northwood and places like that, the taxes are so high because they're all single-family homes on five-acre lots and they got kids in school and everything else. One of the other things I think that's important is we've got to be really careful because if we say, okay, if you're going to have a building, you have retail on the first floor, offices on the second floor or so, and then residences on the third and fourth floor, or maybe offices on second and third, you've got to be really careful for financing from the developers. The developer's going to go to a bank and say, you know, I want to finance this. Again, I'm not a developer, I'm not a finance guy, but in the conversations in the focus group, that's a very important piece of this, is having enough of a mix, whatever that is, to be able to provide a worthwhile risk for a bank to finance a project. I don't know what that is. Again, that's probably one of the great things about having the public hearing is we'll learn about that, is what kind of mix is, is good for the profitability of the project, the financing of the project. And so, if I may, just one other thing, one of the things that I'm finding very confusing is I'm going from the report by the focus group and then we have the parking omnibus and then we have some other stuff here and then we've got, and then we have this. This really is sort of the distilled version of all of that. I would, I would be really happy to have another work session with just that stuff right there and put it right in front of us, take all this other stuff and put it aside and say, okay, here is, let's get our arms around this thing now. Because I think it's, for me, and I can only speak for myself, there's so much information here. It's, it's so confusing. Because I know what we said and I know what the EDC said and I know what others have said and Rick has said, but it's, it's like a hundred-piece puzzle that you're trying to put together here. And I think if it's distilled down into this presentation right here...
Don, could I, I was just asking, Rick, if, I don't want to belabor this process, does it make sense to get a distilled version? We have a, I believe next Thursday's our, do we want to have a work session? I don't know who can make it or not, from six to seven? Work session, no public input with a distilled version? I, I think the ship to me has a direction.
Right.
I think there's a couple of things we need to, and I'm not a big fan of meeting on-off nights, but next week we're all planning on being here, maybe we do a six to seven?
Agreed.
While it's fresh?
Fine with me. I mean, this stuff is starting to make my hair hurt.
But is it...
You don't know this to it or mine? Turning it clear. But...
And I could, I could put the, the PowerPoint presentation into the package that's going out tomorrow and then you'd have it for next week.
Yeah, and I think that, and then just...
That would be great.
Can, can you make it, Paige?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anybody that has a problem making six o'clock next Thursday?
But I'll try.
But, but that way there, at least we're staying on it and hopefully we can get some direction that if we have a follow-up work session...
Yeah, it makes it harder.
It should be short. But, you know, your point, Don, is, and I think I'm somewhat correct, I think it costs about $7,000 a student in Portsmouth to go to school. I, I had two kids, my daughter's in college now, but, so there's 14,000. My taxes were $7,000 a year. So you look at a family that has three or four kids...
Yeah.
It, it is, where you go downtown, it costs the school system nothing.
And if you have a condo downtown, I'll bet you nine times out of 10, they don't have any kids.
No.
They're not in the school system.
That's that kind of mix, but I think if it makes sense with everybody, I think Rick's got a little bit of homework, let him do it. If there's any final thoughts or, I don't want to rush anybody, but William?
One piece of information I would like is the actual downtown mix, commercial versus residential, the percentages, and could we also, out of curiosity, get how many residences actually live downtown? Is that possible?
Well...
Census report.
Yeah.
Well, Census, yeah, Census is just coming out now, unfortunately. We wouldn't be able to do that right away. The, and in terms of your first question, we really wanted to do that for downtown focus group and we got, we got a lot of information, but it's just really hard to do. We went through, it's a combination of the, the assessment records, I'm not sure, we actually may have gotten some of that in there, do we?
I'm just looking at it, I don't think we really did.
We, we worked at it quite a bit and I don't think we were actually able to pin it down, but because, because some things are reported by, you know, dwelling units and some things are reported by square feet. But if I can find it, I will.
I don't believe we did come up with that number. We talked about it, thinking it would be a good piece of information, but then the mechanics of assembling that information was just overwhelming.
Eric, did you have a question?
When we come back, could, Rick, could you have also taken the ideas we've talked about tonight and include them, I guess, in a handout? So, because I know we've talked about some ideas and maybe by then you would also have an idea, a first draft about what you'd think the hotel requirement might be. So anyway, those ideas we talked about tonight in table form, so I'll feel like we're moving forward. And then also...
Be able to do that for the packet that's going out tomorrow?
You will be able to?
I won't be able to do that for the packet tomorrow.
But in hand...
By next week, yeah.
Yeah. And then also, I know one issue that's going to be sensitive when it comes to the council is that 20,000 square foot issue and so I think if we can refine our arguments next week as well in terms of why we don't or do consider that, that'd be great. It'd be real help when we sell it upstream.
So, so just, so William's request for square foot breakdown by use for residential retail office, et cetera, and number of residents downtown, and your, you had a list of ideas from tonight and you had a second thing too that you wanted me to do for next week?
Um, when we, in, in this, in the handout we had tonight, there was before, below 20,000, above 20,000. And I know we talked about tonight, maybe that's not appropriate. And I know when we want to sell that to the council, we want to make sure that we have cogent arguments about, you know, why we think this is good for the city. And so if we can just refine those arguments next week, I think that would be helpful.
And I guess, I guess what I would say, respond to that, that's, that's one thing, but if we're saying that we don't want to have any requirements at all for, if that's, if that's where we're going with that.
I don't know.
Yeah, so we made the 20,000 maybe irrelevant, but I'll, I'll look at that, yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I don't see this group making a recommendation to the city council next week.
No.
I would envision refining our arguments as you want to do and then holding public hearings with, with something concrete in front of us.
Right.
So, okay, just want to make sure.
And that won't, that probably won't even happen next week, it'll probably be another meeting beyond that.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And then, once we have public hearing, then I'm assuming we do one final act and then make a recommendation too?
I would think that would work.
That's how I see it going, so.
And could I just ask, you know, one of the things that I, I'd suggest at the beginning and I'm not sure whether the board agrees with it, is that we not move until we, or that we continue to move with the idea that these are going hand in hand with expansion of the parking supply, the Worth lot garage, that we wouldn't be actively pushing forward a good, a large relaxing of the rules without the city providing additional supply. Is that, are you in agreement with that?
I think it's fair to say that the focus group's general opinion was that, that if there's one thing that hinges everything, it's the Worth lot.
Or a commitment from the city.
Yeah.
In general. I mean, Worth lot or whatever it is.
Yeah.
I think we need a commitment to provide more parking.
And that's a planning objective. It's, it's not revenue, it's, it's in our realm.
This board.
This board wants that.
Yeah, us.
So if anybody has any other comments, if not, we can call for German and meet next Thursday at six. Yes, no?
Among the recommendations that we're going to be making, would that include